It's around at 3:30. Okay, it's 3:30, so we'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everybody to the December 2nd Board of Alderman Meeting. This time, we'll have prayer led by Ward 4, Alderman Julia Harper, filed by the chair. Everybody please stand.
I'll be leaving the prayer myself. Well, we just want to thank you for allowing us to be, to have another day. We would just ask you just bless this meeting, that everything that we do be a blessing to you, Lord. Lord, we just ask you just comfort the family in their loss and war for. Well, we just thank you for all the protective, all the first aid, firefighters, everyone that's video veteran of the city, amen, my prayer, amen.
Thank you flag. Attention, fully pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We are a nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, evergreen, and eternal. Public comments. This is something new, so I just want to, we're going to allow as many as four people public comment section to speak for three minutes. So in order to do that, there'll be some forms out here in the lobby that'll need to be filled out and turned in to the board. Thirty minutes before the board meeting, ready?
We're good.
So the board.
It's about my property.
Except y'all board, when y'all want to speak, what? Come on.
Under the same circumstances.
Okay, so just, all remarks have addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member there. No person shall make personal or personal or slanderous remarks nor otherwise in the order of this core of any board meeting, failure to comply with these rules, neighbor's office, and you be irrelevant of the meeting.
I'm part owner of this property that Henny today had, um, my fence is gone, that property down there is destroyed. And I have not been served, not one time. And they said they ain't got my, this is, they sent me something that said, man, Angie Allen, um, that didn't come to me, so I have not been properly served. That's my property too, that has been destroyed today. And that boy, he sitting over there in jail. He sitting over there in jail, and that boy over there is going to end up committing suicide if this woman don't leave him alone. We've had a fence, he took it down, he had a permit, he got a permit, he put that fence up $5,000, and now that permit, that fence is just destroyed. His whole house was like a tornado, he's just sitting there on top of it. Ask it, a little bit of grace and a little bit of mercy for my kid, and for them to leave him alone, right now let me give him some help. But, but, I mean, what's behind that fence is none of the people's business. It's covered up in a fence. The trailer was gone today, he was, he was moving it. We had another four here, four on custody, and I asked him, I was like, please just let me get done with this story. And then they go down there with excavators and cranks, scare it and stuff up. And I'm just asking for grace and mercy because like, when that boy just down, he's on suicide. I heard he goes out there and he takes his property, and he worked so hard on it, $5,000 for the fence, and I'm just, I'm begging, I'm begging, begging. I understand if it's out of defense, but I'm begging for some mercy and some grace for them not to miss, tear up anything else down, but I, I'm begging.
What was that? What's that address?
The 27th Avenue, South East. And when I tell you, I've got pictures of what's been done and how my house has been, how this property has been left.
That's like grilled.
What did you name it?
Angie Bonzier. Andrew Iceman too, yeah. This quarter looks like a half, this quarter looks like. But how is that better than a fence, $5,000 fence?
Just left it.
Everything just left. Everything's just left. And he has been, we have been drug through the month, but we got a permit for that fence. We had a permit, we put it up legally, we put it up properly, and it was a, I mean, it was a good fence, but no mixed material. He would say, it was a good fence, because she just destroyed it, because she's got a vendetta against us.
Me too.
That's all I have to say. I'm just, I'm the person who requires some mercy and let me give my kids some help. I know I might be right, but he, donkey, but I'm.
Want to use this panel?
This is what I'll ever do, um, and I would like to thank my Alderman for being so transparent, but there's only so much she can do as one Alderman. Um, and I'm speaking on behalf of a property owner, a business owner, and a human being that can relate to this lady too. Um, instead of this city trying to be civilized and work together, because we hired another employee who hung up in my face, asking for her name. And so I'm asking to disown my tax dollars or whatever, to somebody that is playing home on it, or I do the best I can with what I have. I've had property in this city that I was not given, not inherited property yet, but that I've purchased and invested in for over a decade now, and never had an issue until your most recent zoning director was hired. If David Dunn could effectively do his job and hold two titles, he was over parks and wrecks, and zoning, and everything was fine, we got our own fine. I owned this property in other towns, just in Manhattan, Collins, never had an issue, not one single time. And I too feel like it's a personal vendetta. And it's not my fault, you know, who my relatives are or any political affiliation. At the end of the day, I'm still just a human being, and I'm trying to do the best I can with what I have. And to be blocked on a government website and not be able to learn about a bull water notice that not only affects me and my family, but also the elderly and wonderful tenants I have is absurd. That I have to retain an attorney for the fourth time, it's been two years, to fight for zoning matters. I mean, I would spend less if I was criminally convicted of crimes than what I'm speaking just on property or getting out of business here in this town. I want this town to grow and flourish, because my family has stakes here. My dad was a former mayor. My grandfather, what he gave over twenty years of his life, I don't, I don't want to see that anything bad happen with this, and I want it to grow and flourish, the way that the comprehensive plan was written almost ten years ago. Our population has been almost 12%. I am finding homeless people in the dumpsters on my property. People are digging out of the dumpsters just to take kids. Um, a lady is having her electricity cut off, she's a double amputee, she has no affiliation to me, but yes, please do something, I'm begging.
Come and go.
Hang on one second.
Before you talk. All right, I'll, yeah, I'll, yeah. I'm gonna stop. And before I lose speed, I also want to know, does anyone want to offer me an apology for the way that the Alderman that's not here tonight spoke to me and shorted my time and just, just cut me out, just didn't even hear nothing. Does anybody want to apologize for that, first of all? Nobody? Not like it was rude, illegal? I lost my constitutional right? Nobody? Okay. I witnessed this lady's house be destroyed by the city, being guarded by the police. Like my wife said, she should have been, the police could have made more money, no they couldn't, because they don't pay that much. So they decided, y'all decided to take our tax dollars to find a job to provide a workplace where ladies come and rob us, to steal from us, and I'm like, what? Democracy or socialism? Your last quarters, your, your own attorney said it's about compliance. So if we don't comply, what can we do? We get everything stolen from us? City people, not defending our rights, not protecting our rights, not standing up for our rights, not fixing our roads, not providing jobs, not doing anything for housing, not doing anything. But you want our property. Make me an offer. Make me an offer, Ms. Sullivan, how much do y'all guys want to give me for my property? And I'll sell it to you. But don't try to keep strong going with us, this ain't working. God County just, they just be a common citizen. If y'all can't make common sense decisions like other municipalities and counties and cities, and y'all are setting your party in us, just because we're poor, because we talk loud, or because we don't like, I gotta, where's my ticket at? This is what I got in the mail after Thanksgiving. I took my wife on vacation for Earth Day, it's a Thanksgiving, I come back, I have parking or storage partial vehicles in a residential zone. Parking or storage of excessive number of vehicles. I don't have business. You want me to leave my, you want my business to leave McGee, the other one I got? I won't park no vehicle for a company thing that was at my house to get a girl on service call. If you quit, you have to do your house. Or you get rid of that trailer on Main Street that you just happened, you were the only trailer, you know, who got trailer on Main Street? Right there where everybody can see it. Do your job. It's on the move. You can get to it. Do something. My lawyer got a copy of it.
And I think is the conflict, just the Alderman chairman, what I'm thinking, he had a few years, and he had those things in his county, he wasn't.
Y'all want, y'all want to make our team look bad to people, to people, to get it.
Okay, uh, Mayor Ford, I want to remind everybody about the comprehensive thing today. This is on the big deal outside, uh, your city Facebook page, I think we've already had like 250 people taking surveys, so if you have not taken it, I encourage you to take it. It's going to be up to December the 19th. We need to send it out further, we can do that. So again, please consider taking that. As everyone knows, Christmas parades start at 6:00 PM, 5:00. Like, uh, thank the Chamber of Commerce for all their hard work, effort, they have put forward this parade. And a big ceremony at the McGee City Cemetery yesterday morning, they went, we put out, I think it was 200 wreaths on the veterans' graves. Rain, water, fire, all this, and we, old change there next to the prisons. Got all their, everything in order. Code enforcement portal is now up in, on the McGee website, for any problems, you report anything from a water people, any kind of property violation, everything you reported yourself. Uh, and I'd like to congratulate Martha Stewart for bringing his animal control certification. I'd like to bring up here is Mosley, he's been working two large bags of Taffeyville oil, which we're planning over at Martin Jackson Park. We look forward to seeing anybody in the spring, you know, that's a big part, part of us paying Thanksgiving visit to the college veterans' home. We appreciate his dedication to McGee beds and beds everywhere, especially color. Thank you for coming, Inspector Dwayne Simmons, for being a businessman to provide full Thanksgiving and needy thanks here in McGee last week. Voice of honor from Ashes for continuing to work with Tiffany Kinselow, our main refrigerator here on Christmas decorating. You have received numerous positive comments about the lovely decorations, so thank y'all. And then last but not least, our department on the Thanksgiving turkey, nothing positive feedback on that, so, but, good job, I'm all here. Work projects, uh, the week, December the 15th, Southern Corrosion will be painting the ground storage, our tank that plant water here by the old city baseball field, and then elevated tank out here, tractor supply will be washed down. It started at the city park, they started standing post this morning. Send me this very next tomorrow, is that right? That's all I have on the mayor's report. Okay, we need to approve the tenants. Who's got the motion? Who you got second all in favor? Okay, is there any old business? Okay, claims, your version of claims, Doc.
The quantity stuff, man, that was a low. I think that's a high amount. I mean, how do we go about regulating that policy right there? Are they signing in, or how do they, how we regulate that? They should just send us a document. How, how we, um, every court. Yeah, we did, we got that recorded, and she's got, she's.
Henny was going to send, I, I have received it, yeah. I did ask, we just concerned about the amount of money, I don't know, I was saying, I mean, all of the money. I thought that we just going to do the amount, you know, the week.
Henny, how far are we from having the information always going in, always?
Yeah, uh, can you get that, those? Um, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not sure who's on it. I'm not.
Yes, I need to understand what, what, what we're accomplishing. But.
But, I mean, this work is done.
What department's are they working in?
Yeah.
We got two on the garbage truck, we've got, we've got, uh, how many of those works, ten? I know we got two on the garbage truck.
Mainland, they didn't have them with the crystal glass. Yeah. And I had two of them working, helping picking up tracks on 149 Main Street.
I know we, I mean, I know we have to play, but we want to discuss this event. Change of plans.
Thanks, it's nice.
Yeah, okay, change of plans.
But we, we still have a janitor.
So we got, yeah, we have, we have, wasn't hoping to hit on this one. Yeah, I made the most appropriate, but we got to revisit the use of the voices, though.
Okay, so. You can have the votes, yes. I was the second all in favor. Okay, Janice, true, or hack, that's true.
Good afternoon. Thank you for being with us. Well, thank y'all for having me. Um, the interlocal agreement that y'all, that I've been working under was Charles's from like 1996. The auditor came there this time and she was like, no, I don't care at all. So I'm trying to make the auditor happy. Um, I have rewritten the interlocal, the only thing I have changed, um, D Row and Braxton were paying 3%, so we've, um, 3% of their adware for collection. Y'all were at one and a half, a million, what was it, two? I did a 3% across the board for everybody to pay, um, which goes to my collection thing, it was 2,500 of municipalities to collect health practices and settle every month. That was the only change I made to it and putting my name for Charles's was. I have this, this, please, um.
Yeah, Wesley, uh.
Sure, sure.
And once she uses it.
Because you probably, I mean, Charles's was so old, you probably haven't.
I have never seen it.
Yeah, and once I get all four municipalities, I have to send that home to the Attorney General's office, I'd be like, yeah.
How often does this need to be done?
I think it just has to be changed as, I mean, they were fine spreading it on the minutes for me to work under Charles's, but then the auditor said after first term, I should have changed it, like, all year and months, I guess.
But Wesley, you, it just has to have John's signature and the mayor's signature, and then just the back, maybe later this way.
All right, thank you all for.
Thank you. Thank you, I'll be coordinates.
Y'all have any questions for me? You got to change something. Did we, uh, what is something that we back to? Um, we had to change a comment, so.
I might.
Yeah, I haven't made any revisions. Okay, so I know we're finished off.
Yeah, we talked about making sure that we put a form, but, um, and, uh, all the registration information for each, uh, company is on file here. And then the only other thing is, um, it doesn't call out specifically, you know, those specific locations, but establishing where.
And then the only other thing is, um, it doesn't call out specifically, you know, those specific locations, but establishing where. Yes, um, currently it's a, a man involved, um, they got something that could, you know, the, the location where they're from, they don't need to be, they don't need to call out specifically.
Do you have any insight or that should, like, uh?
Not, not at this point, um, you know, ideally it's closer to the lagoons or better.
So it's not that much.
Yeah, it needs to be closed and, you know. So at, at this point, the leaders should be getting put back on when they get done, um, yeah, I'm not familiar with how, what's happening. There needs to be a good procedure in place, uh, that all the people, if somebody pulls their permit to be able to pump, they understand where they should pump and what the protocol should be. The general language.
And so we have.
That's not the way it is. Wesley, if you have any comment?
I, I wrote on it.
Yeah, once you. Um, we have you up. Um, I know the work that they were coming out to, the payment to tracks and, uh, correct. So particularly the one driveway, um, that they were not making corrections. Um, the, the other four, um, addressed and if we need to readdress them. Yes, that's not, I even came out last Wednesday and addressed some of the punch list items that are remaining, that are not addressing. So I just ruled and trying to smooth it as possible in these driveways and cars are stroking whatever, so they put on top of pavement. Some of those have, yes, there's there. We're just trying to address the other.
So can we go ahead? Do you need to, because you have all the digits, but you have to put all the minutes. I was, I was saying, you got. So I would not.
If you, if you don't make sure that you do the copy and then, you know.
I already sent that email last week.
Um, so I, I left the updates sitting on the printer in my office, so I apologize for that. There's nothing new necessarily from an update perspective. Um, one thing that needs action tonight is, um, we do Struthers Recreation, who was the contractor that did the playground, uh, sent their pay request. So just one final pay request. Uh, so if you remember the original contract amount, it was three hundred fifty nine thousand five hundred eighty two dollars. We did a change order, a deducted change of thirty five thousand. So that brings the, uh, current contract on three hundred twenty four thousand four hundred thirty four dollars. That is what is for. Thirty four dollars. All the playground equipment. That contract was just a playground, um, so.
And you're filing with every night?
So there's a couple of corrections they, um, have done, uh, have to come back and, uh, on the brick a little bit more, they got some concrete on the brick. But, uh, there's, uh, this, uh.
Also been some concern about. You know, there's no burn that goes about twenty feet before you get to the street, we talked about it. Does it then look bad or are we also doing something to that or?
So we told him, so, uh, that, you know, Struthers kind, that wasn't included in Struthers contract. So that's part of the grading, the original grading was done. And so we've discussed it and we got a plan to, uh, to fix it, where we'll put a grade in and allow some water to.
Ranks a lot, it just.
Also called Christian and, um, we, uh, a lot of the things can be, um, it's fine grading. When they come in to do the landscaping, it goes up. But the main thing is that where the water's flowing across the walking trail right now, and that's something that needs to be. What's that five hundred? Three hundred and three twenty four. Three hundred twenty four thousand five hundred thirty four. Five hundred thirty four. Almost original, five, three, three hundred twenty four. Three hundred twenty four thousand five hundred thirty four. Three, two, four, five, three. That's correct, yeah, so the original contract amount was three five nine.
You got the motion? Second all the favors. Any other questions? Thank you. Those words.
Tim sent his report out, you got the thing else?
Well, I'll let you know, our D B Q inspection, we're very good on our news and auto stations. Fast apartment colors on that. Now, I thank all the guys for walking and picking up trash in all the streets, laying the, laying the street. We spent a whole day picking up trash. Yeah, there was the punches.
And Jim's guys actually did that.
Except before he cut, so I asked Jim to wait a little closer to Christmas to do that last. So, uh, Jim got these guys out, they took two days, they picked up, practically fly all the way to.
Uh, why are you here, Tim? This is doing things to you. Uh, have, have you got a timeline on those, uh, bleachers that, that are parked?
Pressure, watch the.
Yeah, we're waiting, still waiting.
I have a question, Tim, on debris and what does that work?
Monday, Tuesday, wind, this is Williams, Thursdays and Fridays, Mr. Burger.
Okay. We've got somebody in. Bag of leaves out. And they have just sat there for weeks and they've called city hall, but they were told that. People can get picked up in bags, but they didn't know that, is that the policy?
Will pick them up?
Were they? Just a little small pile of sticks right, um, in there for weeks.
Where is it at now?
Um, third street.
What east, what west?
West.
Third.
Third street.
The department?
Yeah.
Okay. I know, um, Mayor is going to bring to your attention as well about. Um, this came out of eight oh four Bolton Street. Take a look at that.
Don't have any other questions for Tim?
So just for clarification, do you put your bag?
Ever, ever have they put them out there?
One, one more question. The place where we had the gas leak on that going drive, I know we dug out everything, we still have coal, but what is, what was the plan?
Is it our company or the water? Put that sign? Whoever did that?
Yeah, uh, yeah, uh, do we have a plan to, uh, we're gonna pass it or we're gonna leave it?
No, we're gonna pass, we're talking about the street.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna pass. That's my asphalt. The asphalt plant don't run unless they get forty five tons of.
Right.
Something like that.
Well, I just think, I just think that one.
Yeah, I'm good on the project, we want to go to the local forward and get it out at least thirty acres.
Your nails on our cars?
No. Ours is orange.
Okay.
Consider now that, I think it's large, so they mentioned this and asked that we had. I think you need to get at least.
Yeah.
Do you look for that?
Yep, I, I've actually looked into before, you get the aluminum boxes that you put together in the hole, instead of the great big ones.
Anything that you.
I'm sorry, we're piling this on, what about, uh, update on equipment, is the equipment?
I get things, waiting on, uh, waiting on them.
I know you read it for.
On the trash cart?
The slide looks good.
Okay, I have another one. Uh, I've got one thing, uh, special that I have to take, one thing. Uh, first thing is I'd like to, uh. Like to officially accept the donation that was made by the district attorney's office, was equipment donated. Uh, worth a total of three thousand. Three hundred and forty five dollars. Yeah. On the cover.
Okay.
Uh, district attorney's office.
That was a good, good example. I'm making mention, we accept the donation.
I wish I could have.
Chris, we got, we got second.
House.
I've got second all.
Thank you, Mary, just a thing for us. Do, I got, I do have one employee, we hired two weeks ago. For some family issues, she couldn't start work, so she's no. Taking a fish or.
Before you go, gee, I did one community job almost past weekend. I've done that very, very.
I do want to say this, it was all my guys.
Yeah.
So that's, they, they.
I do want to, I want to end you on that, but I do also, you know, strange tennis. I guess it's a cloud. You know, with situations like this, it takes like a lot of the. I know that before communication goes. To know what's going on.
Yes, sir.
Um, at one point, it was a man that.
Yes, sir.
The, the entire time. I think I should, should at least know what's taking place, I think. It went through a couple, you all in a couple of neighborhoods, out searching, and none of the residents have. What was, what was taking place. So I think for the most part, I think we need to figure out some type of communication where the, you tell the mayor, Mary, come to the board or some type of way, or iris or something.
Because when, when it moved, nobody knew.
Here's a thought, in that situation, we have, I, I'm not sure, she could start, she had constantly ten to twelve calls that came in. Just an individual saying they saw this, they heard that, it was never an exact, at that time, we already had intel that he had already kept possibly to just take this. And that's the search, that's my friend, because I told you about it, you know, so. Just whatever call we get, we take care of. But I do understand.
Yeah, we just, uh, I may have called the board, so the box is, so call that, so we can have some type of communication that's that.
I mean, and the last thing I will give you while you're looking for someone, calling me, but we do need to get some kind of system in place if you.
Well, I thought, well, you can't because you're an actual. I know you can't.
Let me be clear on that.
No, I actually, would it be okay if I relayed the mayor, the mayor could sit down and group message?
I saw it on Facebook. I have it, I have it.
Yes, yeah, we, we'll just do that then.
As soon as you put it out, our phone starts ringing, um.
Being that it was in my ward, being that it was on my screen. Doctor to hear from someone else, that's all. So, um, let me take the time, I'm having a call and do all these things to figure out, not only, not only just for the city side, but personally for my family's side as well.
The only, the only situation that you won't be right again and again, do it, you'll probably be, probably thirty minutes, because when we come, we conversion.
Yes, listen, that, that's personal, but, you know, we just trying to get that, that line.
And like I said, if, if you can just notify the mayor and the mayor take it from there and not take people away from.
I do, I do. You do with that, maybe just same time.
Is that it, this will, um, Wesley, if this goes to the group, does that, hey, this was, well, we don't. You can emerge? Okay. I just want to make sure.
I got a call from this. I immediately come off you, I already knew that. A text, their protein and food. Did not contact Suzie or Allison. Because I, I figured, well, that's three. I assumed that since Allison's been someone, the son is on the police department that she knew.
Well, they were searching in our yard.
Well, no, we're not saying, we're just trying to.
I never heard anything about it.
Well, I have.
Yeah. They were all over the place.
My battery was dead.
I promise you, my battery was.
Yeah, my battery was shot.
And he was literally at nineteen year, we, we could do that going. You gone tag paying out.
That was mine.
And that's the best way to do this, if I'm just gonna, I'm supposed to talk to the mayor. You got any work, not always, I, I'm sure I have to do the right ones, that's why I went to you.
Thank you so much, chief.
Thank you.
Keep up the work.
Hey, we're gonna talk, thank you.
Fire department, fuck.
I don't have any name, but Lord, I just want to reiterate kind of what y'all done achieved. I know our, we had, we had, we had, we had told you the same thing, if we got, like, if we had a major fire in your. Uh, you back to the same call that the mayor, uh, you know. Any questions, man? We get it all, we get it by a phone. All right, thank you. So I'll make a.
I don't have anything, I just put the, I'm gonna get requested last week in your packet, will this.
Any questions?
You have this special question? Okay, you just put it back in there, but did something change on it?
Well, I don't, I don't really.
Okay, I just want to mention.
I just put the, I gave the information about the zoning hearings next week that you.
Yes, we, I saw.
Okay.
Thank you. But you can get us the, uh, information. Before we leave?
Yes, thank you.
Bill Inspector, why you, I put everything in the package, sir, or today. Didn't, I don't know, the list of everything we done, the only thing we did add is put it there, we did like to go to online services to sign up for baseball, softball, and soccer. Now, that alleviates some strain here at the, oh, it will increase the cost from sixty five to seventy. You have any questions at all? And the computer, if you have any questions about that, we think we have very few guys that are signed up. Tracking of players from your year. Tracing of players from here here.
Um. You can. Yes, okay, I didn't leave. Um, can you do that favor? I know we can discuss about our our tax department about the bad boards and everything. Um, is it possible that we can, I was kind of brainstorming. Um, it's possible, the last one for me, correct, the bad boards and everything.
Yes, sir.
Right, the city made those?
No, sir.
Murphy's made those?
I believe, I'll check, but they all come in and ask. And I think that's.
Well, I was just thinking, favorite, I'd like to know. Um, copious. Do they have a well in term?
You're talking about?
Maybe we, they have also Simpson County. At the O-Tech, maybe they create create that, they could use the frame that y'all could have. I mean, I'm just trying to be a little more cautious of this. Right, they have to give them some. But um.
Mr. Kurt, please add the O-Tech. Uh huh, Penny can give you this information. And and that's. Um. But they have CNC machine all of that and my.
Maybe we do look at that and as an option as well. Um, I got the numbers for the for them being brand new out.
And they were.
They were.
They were not escorted like you.
Yeah.
Can we go ahead and get those two quotes as quick as possible? The two quotes for the four and a half. Because Tim, we're gonna take the bleachers down, the longer we wait, that's supposed to.
Yeah, we'll get started the season. Yeah, exactly, so 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 I think we need to go ahead and. Uh, did we get? Any of the ones that we got now, are they from, are they local? Are they local?
Well, the one we had was, thank you, Tim out there, you know, they were surprised on what the concrete would go.
Okay.
And then he said. There's one, there was a big amount.
Okay. So. A concrete is expensive.
Yes, that's that's what. The big the big thing.
Thanks so much.
Uh, Mr. Jimmy, I have a couple things. First of all, I want to say thank you for fixing that gate, that gate fixed. Um, can we have any updates on this last night?
No, we're good, we're doing a work on it. I hadn't been in touch with Tim, but we gotta have a day where to stop with it, because we're dealing with the late trips, Tim.
Absolutely, um, and then one more thing, I just had some comments about the soccer season that happened. Well, we. Let's make sure that we are checking to post locally before we go out of town, and you may be, I don't know. Uh, I didn't, people asked me if we were shopping locally on that, I said, I don't know. But before we get baseball Wednesday, if you would get that book, this part so important. As true. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jim.
Questions about the home service that's going up there?
Well, Jim, I think that's. That's just mine.
We had a project somewhere in Wild Park is kind of shut down as far as uh.
Well, let me try to explain right now, we really want a warmer day. Give it. And get it, we did the.
That looks so much better.
The only other thing is.
I was wondering.
The gates of.
All the gates. The entire park or just the weather, whether water. Thoughts about closing it, I don't think that'd be a good idea to.
But you just come out securing the gate at night.
Right.
No, no, I know you're wrong, I know. I need to give some thought about that.
I just wanted to know if the gate weren't gonna fall over on us.
Right. I mean, I was just wondering.
I think we need to give some uh, those people out there.
Who's that?
On down.
Correct.
Uh, I think that that's that's. There are weak cars going. Would that be something that we do in-house? Will we do that in-house?
I think it is. I mean, because they have this big hole and Daniel's a carpenter too, he does computers and carpentry in it. I'm.
Pull it all the way down, the cars from driving.
Are there some of those concrete?
Um, if you. If it works out, if we have them, okay, we're gonna get getting that done, get that done as soon as possible. If we have them, if not, then you'll get a surprise on what it's gonna cost, so. We wanna we wanna get that closed out here for you. Because uh, it does do us every good to keep playing and.
Like hooks, not hooks in them. And run the wire from.
Yeah, a big heavy wire.
Eric, I always come to the board, I know, you tell me a reason, I gotta go, went to my desk. Don't bring that up here.
So what are the a thousand gallons of fuel that we got? That's thirteen of this month. I've got a hundred and eighty seven gallons of though. So. What we're trying to do is get four four thousand gallons. We got two different quotes for it to be cheaper on us. Us ordering a thousand gallons, it really hurt us because we're a month paying five hundred dollars to ship it from. That three down here and we're about to do it again, so that's a thousand dollars we're in on shipping.
So the goal, because the freight is what we pay for it, we all have this discussion before that when we buy a smaller car. Uh, with the um, the conversation has kind of been that um. We had to pay this price because they bought a smaller car, it was priced. If we if we would go ahead with the four thousand, um, that would bring the price down, that would be lower than the price actually where it was. Which would continue to keep us our flow rate where it has been. But we're flowing more, we're we're selling that fuel. Um, then we have, uh, the thousand gallons gallon is a little bit of a credit, just to do some training and bulk and bit of fuel, but we are selling significantly more than has been sold in the past. So um, I make a motion that we fill with the four thousand gallons from rackling oil at three forty seven. That is to be delivered on a dedicated trailer, it was very.
Then we can go back down to our original price like you said.
Hold on, I got.
Three forty seven eighty five is what.
Pergo.
Yes, Pergo.
What is that?
Four hundred, low lead aviation.
No, three dollars and forty seven cents. What's what's the eighty five? It's not. Okay, all right, sorry, some of us, some of us.
It's just the way it's made, aviation fuel is printed out with the four numbers.
Anything in emergency matters? First, I got a plan that I've been. We talked about and when Miss Susan come down with Kill Patrick, sent a offer for a three day class. December the sixteenth through the eighteenth, I've got it right here.
There's not a price on it.
It's a free class. The only thing that we've got to see we covered is just the hotel stay. And I got. It's a free class. Uh, the only thing to see we had covered is, you know, is the state at a hotel up there. And that'd be the sixteenth through the eighteenth round. I travel up to. Yes, ma'am, already got them. Just three hundred, four hundred. It's gonna be four hundred and fifty seven dollars. Well, I had to stay at two different hotels, but. Yeah, so the seventeenth, I got tickets to another one because everything's a book with her. One is three hundred and five. Yeah, three oh two forty seven and the other one is one fifty one oh five.
This thing is dumb.
The pool's there.
It is graduation.
You have the piece of the other.
See, my mother's got. You got sex all the way. Anything else, John? Other days.
I think I called and I had the discussion with this constituent, but this was the last adjustment without coming to the board. Um, and I wanted to discuss this with Auguste Burch to make sure that she, that we were all engaged about it. So I make a motion that we make the adjustment to this one bill. Uh, we had, she had an O ring throughout in her meter and pulled it in your. I got a second motion.
All I have. So one 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 minute. Joe, I don't know if you recall, I took a look at the uh, the fees. And it seems like very extremely uh high in February. Was there something special that took place at that time?
No.
I did. Dramatic amount compared to. Then so they just, I know they're fixed up, so that would have been the start of the finish amount, right?
Yeah, best I can remember, looking at that. Everything for that was a little over ten thousand dollars.
Okay, so that one of that one of.
We're going to need an executive session for litigation and. Litigation first.
I make a motion to close the meeting for consideration of need for executive session for litigation.